Deep statement for us today.
You bet. Our mission, our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. And our mission, in connection with our community, the district, school district empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment so each student thrives.
Thank you, thank you. So, real quick, I'd also like to add a reminder, at our last meeting, we did approve acknowledgement for our being on tribal grounds and we have extended a invitation to the tribe to our next meeting in October. And at that time, we will, with them in attendance, we will start that, that process. So, to be, to be started at our, at our next meeting, but we'd have extended out to the tribe to an invitation to the tribe. All right. Next up, first up, we have approval of our minutes. And let's separate these. So, let's do approval of our minutes for our September 17th special meetings, minutes.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second, Jeffries.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion to second any discussion on that. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right. And next up, we have, let me get to this here. We have the approval of our September 21st minutes. And Larry, Director Jeffries had submitted a, an amendment to that to reflect the motion for Director Stauffer as the legislative rep. And so, that amendment would read, "I move that Director Stauffer, as our legislative representative, represent us at the General Assembly as the certified voting member and you, and using our template, our survey as a guide with a little bit of flexibility to vote on our behalf." So, that will be, that will change the wording that is in the current minutes.
Move to approve as amended.
I'll second that also, Director Jeffries.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I will, I will say, when I read the minutes, I wasn't sure that's what I said. And I sure couldn't remember my, my exact wording. And I went and downloaded the video and fast forwarded to that section so I could come up with the exact wording as I said it that night. So, I really appreciate having the recording available for that. And I hope in the future, as we return back to more traditional face-to-face meetings, that we can maintain the recording ability. I found it very helpful.
Great, thank you. Tracy, you have a comment? Put your hands up. Or you're just waving at me? Okay. Okay, hearing no more comments. All those in favor of the amended minutes for September 21st signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have, any changes to the current agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Hearing none, can I go ahead?
Move to approve as presented. Sorry.
All right. That's okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Oh, hey, there we go. We got Director Pickens with us. Welcome. All right, just in time. Okay, thank you. Got a motion to second. Any discussion on the agenda items? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next up, we have our consent agenda.
This Director Stauffer saw, moved as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on our consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right.
Oops, aye. I was unmuting, sorry.
Oh, there we go. That's for a, an aye for approval.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to make a comment on, on the vouchers, just real quick. Over the next couple of months, you're going to see some fairly large checks written out to individuals out of the ASB account. And what I wanted to indicate to you, because I saw, I saw a couple in this one, and that's, those are refunds from the choir trip for Disneyland last spring. So, if you see some big checks to individuals, that's what those are too. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, let me get my notes here. So, where am I at here? I've got a... Nope, it's over here. We have a couple of public comments that I need to read aloud. Actually, I'm just gonna... Here we go. All right. Okay, so we have two public comments that we're going to read here, for those that do not have visual capability on the screen or calling in. Since first, the first one we have here, "The agenda for the Squim School Board meeting on 10/5/2020 shows that the CBA agreement reached between the Squim School District and the Squim School District Para Educators will come up before the school board for approval. The district's health service team does not feel that we are, were adequately represented by the SAP bargaining team and would like you to consider not approving the CBA agreements as it stands. Our primary concerns is the discrepancy in the pay raise for the paras who work in life skill and the paras who work in health services. CBA reads as follows, Article 18, Section 4, employees who work with life skills and developmental center students and employees who work one-on-one with student being served for behavioral disabilities shall receive $1 per hour premium pay hours working with those students. Employees whose job descriptions include specific duties as a health clerk shall receive 50 cents per hour premium pay working in this assignment. Although we are complete support of the paras who are to receive the dollar premium, may, we feel that in our position as health clerks, we meet not only the same training requirements as the paras who are to be the, get the $1 hour premium pay, but we additionally meet many more specialized training requirements. Certificates for four invasive procedures as part of the, our job duties, diabetes care, clean intermittent catheterization, emergency seizure medication, nasal midazolam, gastric tube feeding, management of districts AED program, first aid kits and eye wash stations, specialized annual training specific to health services, life-threatening health conditions, life-threatening allergy, asthma, diabetes, seizures, cataract conditions, and more medication administration, injection, oral eye, nasal inhaled, concussion head injuries, broken bones, and other acute injuries, OSHA bloodborne pathogens, and HEBB, LNI, and district accident prevention program. Health services students, student health management guidelines, new 13-page document to manage COVID, student health, health rooms during this pandemic. In an effort to clarify with the SAP bargaining team, the reasons for the discrepancy in pay raise, we met with the President Elizabeth Jowers, who outlined the reasons why the paras getting the dollar hour premium pays deserved it. The reasons were those employees deal with bodily fluids and the district wants to retain quality employees in the living skills program. Needless to say, we feel strongly that these two items apply to health services staff as well. Additionally, with a world pandemic and the effect of COVID-19 on schools, we have the added risk of being one of the only high exposure risks jobs for LNI designation in the school district and the only intermittently very high-risk exposure job in the district. To rectify the discrepancy, we have met with SAP President Elizabeth Jowers on 9/10/2020, met with Dr. Clark, who listened to our concerns on 9/16/2020, and met with bargaining team and WEA Olympic Union representative on 9/24/2020. We were told at the last meeting that there was nothing you can do about it. Thank you for consideration, Squim School District Health Services Team. And with that, I just want to remind our board members that under our responsibility, we do not do bargaining with individuals. It's the bargaining group, and the bargaining group has made their determination. So, and that Dr. Clark has had conversations with these individuals. Okay, next up. Get back to my docs here. All right, to the Squim School Board, I, I am in the, in complete agreement that if the Squim community has a high number of COVID-19 cases, that school should not be in session. However, this is not and has not been the case for Squim. You stated that if the numbers stay low for four weeks, that you would open up all of the schools and bring students back slowly. The students and members of our community worked hard to achieve this in hopes that our students would get a chance at an in-person school at the end of September. We asked our children not to play sports, not to gather in groups, or, or more than to eliminate parties, get togethers, family birthdays, except on Zoom, to wear masks that are sweaty, and to not hug, touch, or come within six feet of your friends. We asked our neighbors not to have parties, get togethers, to wear masks, and to gather outdoors apart when possible. The community of Squim has largely complied and has had numbers overall more in line with the low numbers of Jefferson County than with the higher numbers of Port Angeles and the West End. We did this work in part with the exception, expectation that if we could do this, all our students, our sixth graders, and our high schoolers would go back to school. It may be phased in per year plan, but that if the numbers stayed low, we would go back slowly, starting the end of September or early October, with a grade being added every two to three weeks. Now that we have gone through the work and sacrifices and our numbers have stayed low, it is unfair at the last minute to tell our students who are already struggling mentally that you changed your mind and that only elementary students can go back. Many schools around the state where numbers are low have students back in high school, including Port Townsend, and with hybrid models, their cases are staying low. Please consider and weigh the mental health and academic needs of our middle and high school students, too. Please look at the examples other highs, other high schools have set that go back in a hybrid model and will have numbers staying low. Please stick to your word if, that if the numbers stayed low for four weeks, that middle and high school students can come back by phasing in one grade at a time, two weeks apart. I have heard now that maybe high schoolers can go back in January, but what will be different in January that we couldn't go back now? Our students are not so disappointed and need something to look forward to. Friends and interaction and stimulation are so important at this delicate age. High school is so tough as it is. Please value the importance of the mental health and stimulation of older students and find a way to bring them back like they were counting on. Our districts, other districts with low numbers have done this for their middle school and high school students. Please stick to what you, we are counting on and do the same. Thank you for taking the time to listen and to consider a parent's perspective. Jenny, parent of middle school and high schooler. And during our board business, Dr. Clark will be addressing this issue under the reopening discussion. So, we will talk about this at a later time in the meeting. Okay. All right. Now, we move on to our board communication here. And starting off, we have our student board representatives. And first up, we, we would have our senior representative, Olivia Preston. Is Olivia with us today?
Yes, I am here.
All right, hi, Olivia.
Hi.
All yours.
Okay, so I have from the high school that there's currently a committee working hard on what the reentry plan will be for the high school. Because of the way students move from classroom to classroom and with different students from different classrooms, it's much harder a model to come up with than anticipated. OPA would like to share a shout out to the OPA team. They have been working tirelessly in planning technology and learning that connected with students and standing professionalism. Hashtag proud to be an otter. Three cheers for DeeDee Nielsen and her husband Mark. DeeDee has been on an enrichment coach at OPA for many years. Her dedication to kids, kids go well beyond the classroom, though. Over the last several weeks, DeeDee and her husband, Mark, have been landscaping our campus and building beautiful benches. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate you. Lastly, they're thrilled to have students back on campus starting on October 12th. They're planning a virtual OPA community meeting this Wednesday, October 7th at 6:00 PM. To discuss the details of our back-to-school program, I'd like to share that the Squim's newest learning opportunity, Dungeness Virtual School, is fully operational. Staff members Hillary Horner and Phil Zarelli have spent countless hours learning new software programs and meeting with students and families. We appreciate their hard work and willingness to jump into this new online world. A special shout out goes to Kiana Harrison for her support and dedication to DVS. And then, I unfortunately didn't get anything from the middle school, but that's all I had from all the schools. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Olivia. Okay, next up, we have our junior representative, Alyssa Beby. You are up.
Thank you for saying my last name right. You said it was perfect.
Oh, perfect, good, thank you. I was like, okay, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna do this.
Okay, so I have a report from Gray Wolf Elementary School. This week was the beginning of virtual check out of library books. Thank you to, they want to thank Dean Arico Bene and Linda Sanquist for the, for the hard work. They want to do a shout out to the teachers for the instructions, and the staff will welcome students in a week. Teachers are working for a plan to offer gap closing instruction in the classrooms and maintain a high-level education online. Gray Wolf would like to thank the board for allowing them to bring students back in the campus, and the staff is really excited. Unfortunately, I didn't get anything from, I didn't get a response from Helen Howler, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our regular board communication with our board members. So, let's start with the Director Ku. You're up, sir.
All right, good evening. Really, just quick, appreciated the public comments that folks have put in. I know we'll discuss those further, not the comments, but we'll discuss the topics further. And just recognize that we also had two other statements that seemed to be in similar alignment with one of the public comments that was received this morning. So, looking forward to discussing that. Great to see our student board reps here. Always interested in whatever form or format is appropriate to hear perhaps from y'all is how things are going in this unique environment. I know each family has their own unique situation, and mine is no different. But it's always helpful to hear from other students about how they're, how they're getting through this. And frankly, anything the board should be aware of or would, would enjoy hearing about. Otherwise, just my continued gratitude to our staff and everything they're doing for these trying times. This is above and beyond what is typically asked. And just want to say thank you and recognize this extraordinary circumstance and everything y'all are doing to, to address it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Director Ku, and acknowledging the, the issue, problems that come up. We think we just heard from our prior, one of our past board, fellow board members and past president, Robin Hendrickson, they lost their internet cable for possibly the whole week. And that can be challenging in this time for both work and for their students that are in our school. So, it's, it's a reality that we all have to face at this moment. Okay, next, next up, we have Director Jeffries.
Hi. Well, let's see. First of all, I attended the General Assembly, which I found very interesting. And I was thankful it wasn't as long as they said it was going to be. So, I survived the day and remained online most of the time. I asked to be adopted by the school, well, some of the schools, and I got basically math lessons from Helen Howler, Gray Wolf, Squim Middle School. I got a math online worksheet and a video on a mysterious burning candle. I got a shout out to the online videos. They're very well done, learned a lot. I gotta give a special shout out, though, to the Helen Howler fact family. If you haven't seen them, they're all about town, and there's three or four of them, and they are presenting numbers to the second graders in a very entertaining, interesting way. So, I found that very good, excellent. I know I've sent, contacted Dr. Clark and Assistant Superintendent Mon about questions that WASDA has been asking of their board members about monitoring instruction and participation, and basically, how's it going? You know, what is your district doing to gather data? And how is that data reported to the board and with what frequency? So, I would hope we would consider a monthly, possibly, report from the district on how it's going, how many students are involved, what do we need to improve on, those kind, that kind of information. So, other than that, probably some things I left out, but good job to all the teachers and the students. I know this is a very trying time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Jeffries. I know I occasionally, it's fortunate to have a, you know, student in school. I either listen through the door or pop in the back of the room every once in a while to look in to see what's going on. And, you know, there's some, there's some educational learning and questions and, and work going on. So, it's, they're, they're doing it, and they appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Director Stauffer.
Hi, good evening. Just appreciation for the public comments. And I know, yes, it's extremely challenging and complex for, for everybody. And I really appreciate the comments that come in. And I want to give a shout out to Alyssa, our student rep, because I heard before this meeting started that WASDA does, or did a videotape of you that, that they're going to show at the regional meeting. So, I'm glad that you were able to make that connection. From there, the Legislative Committee work continues this weekend, and I'll, I'll update more when I do my presentation. And then, I, I observed a parent and their student, the parent is a waitress at one of our restaurants, and the student was, was conducting school under her mom's tutelage. And it was pretty neat to see. And she had a breakfast and was on her laptop and going to school. So, yes, challenging out there, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Stauffer. Director Pickens?
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to comment briefly. Appreciated going to the General Assembly. It was, it was nice to see so many, quite, quite a few of issues that come up that I think would have direct impacts for, for the students of Squim and, and staff members of Squim School District. So, I, I definitely appreciated that experience and appreciated aligning those, those priorities. Also, just based on my unique perspective, it was nice to see the alignment that exists with a lot of the priorities that WASDA has with, with other, other partners, mainly other, other labor partners, WA being one of them, where a lot of times, those, those priorities are right in line, because so many priorities align to what's, what's best for staff and what's best for students. So, and I think it just speaks to just the fact that we have two, two contracts that we're going to be voting on, and that, that relationships don't, I think it's important to point out, the relationships don't have to be adversarial in that regard, that there's, there's usually a lot more alignment that, that comes up. So, that being said, also important to point out, as it relates to, to bargaining, that sometimes that work is never done. And there's, there's further conversations that can be had to solve, to solve problems. So, there's letters of, letters of understanding, memos of understanding, MOUs and the like. So, but I, I appreciate that things aren't, aren't adversarial in any way. So, I think that's important to have that partnership. But I'm, I think we're focused in the right direction when it comes to the legislative priorities. And that's all for me. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Director Pickens. And yeah, just not much myself either. You know, I appreciate those that did get an opportunity to attend the general legislative session. Unfortunately, duty called and wasn't able to make that this year. I remember last year was in, in person was quite a learning experience. And several have acknowledged, we have had, you know, some individual contacts from other parents that had similar questions and concerns around, you know, going back to school and not going back to school in, in both sides. And again, we'll be having more discussion on that later. It's, it, as Director Stauffer had stated, that it's a lot more complicated than, than, than it may seem. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, a lot of decisions to make, and, and just looking out for not just the, the safety of, of everybody involved, but also the overall liability and safety of the district as well with meeting with requirements of Department of Health and recommendations. So, we'll be discussing that later time. And that's all I have. But I see Director Jeffries has his hands up. So, I think he wanted, wanted to add to what he was saying earlier. So, you got the floor, sir.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, I wanted to express my appreciation and amazement at the valiant effort that Olivia and Alyssa used to try to get on to the General Assembly. For whatever reason, they had technical difficulties, but they were making the effort, and they were interested in what was going on. So, I really appreciate getting the students involved, and they were interested enough to try to check in. And I tried to help and didn't get the job done. I apologize for that. But it was, it was good to see them make the effort.
Well, great. Thanks for that acknowledgement, Larry. And for informing us, Director Stauffer, about listener video, here we are, Squim student reps standing out again as they have for, for many years in, in the past. And here's our new, our new student representative just taking that, that baton and running with it like those predecessors. So, thank you, Alyssa, for that. We look forward to that video. All right. Okay. Where are we at now? Next up, we have our report to the board from our HR, our Human Resources Report. Victoria, you are up.
Thank you, President Gibson and Directors and Dr. Clark. So, this evening, the HR Department has prepared a short video presentation to give you all a brief overview of what we do. And a brief overview of what we do and just to kind of highlight a few of the recent activities our department has been a part of. So sit back and relax and I hope you enjoy a few minutes of HR 101. Good evening, Directors, colleagues, community members and friends. My name is Victoria Ballant and I am the Human Resources Director here at Squim School District. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our department to you this evening. By the time this presentation has concluded, I hope you have a better idea about who we are, what we stand for and how we work. The Human Resources Office of the Squim School District has an identity all our own within the larger framework of the organization. We like to imagine ourselves as the heart of our district, pumping hope and help through the hallways, classrooms and offices. The humans in the Human Resources Office work hard to be helpful and we strive to do our work with humility by acknowledging the contribution of others, collaborating and operating with integrity. Building trust within our community is our top priority. Our spot in Squim School District gives us the chance to partner with our colleagues to build the teams that will keep us on mission. When the Human Resources Office shows up in our school and the larger community, we want to show up in a way that reflects the vision and mission Squim School District. We want the touchpoints between our schools and our office to be hope-filled, positive interactions that model the presumption of positive intent, that build trust and that give help. We want to show up for our students by casting a wide net to build diverse applicant pools. Our office has recently launched a new career page with a much broader audience and we are establishing connections to universities nationwide to help build the diversity of thought our students need to thrive. We want to show up for our associations with a spirit of collaboration and cooperation. We are so pleased to share the latest collective bargaining agreements that have been ratified by their members. We completed a one-year contract with Squim Education Association that clarified work schedules, better articulated the process for reduction in force and clarified some of the provisions of the salary schedule. We are thankful for the great collaborative work of Diana Pierceall and Isaac Rafflejay. A few highlights from our negotiations of the Parrot Educator Association include clarification of how additional hours are added to assignments and how seniority is calculated. We added an article on staff safety and negotiated increased premium pay for health clerks, certified occupational therapy assistants, speech and language pathology assistants, sign language interpreters and parent educators who work with our life skills students. A special thank you to Elizabeth Joyers for her great collaboration. A big piece of what happens in the Human Resources Office is talent management and position control. Talent management comes down to building and retaining a workforce of great employees that achieve the organizational goals. And position control is a system of tracking information based on positions rather than employees. It creates a framework of positions for all the jobs within Squim School District. When talent management and position control systems work in tandem, we can enjoy built-in accountability, increased equity among programs and a fiscally sustainable future. This past spring, you saw position control in action as we endured the heartbreaking task of reducing our workforce. We are currently operating with forty fewer employees this year than we ended with last year. These reductions can be felt district-wide as cuts were made at all levels. But with reductions, there are always some vacancies that must be filled. So we are thrilled to have welcomed three new staffers to Squim School District this fall. It's all about balance. We must find that balance between fiscal responsibility and delivering quality educational services. So that is your HR department in a nutshell. We are committed to servant leadership, propagating a culture of trust and transparency and maintaining consistency in our staffing model. We are Victoria, Valerie and Ashley and we are the Squim Human Resources Department. So there's your five-minute window into the HR department and I'm just wondering if there's any questions I can answer for you.
So first of all, and I know Carol Harms is on the, on the call and we're not in the boardroom, but bravo, that was amazing. That was an amazing presentation. So thank you so much. I appreciate that. So let me, I have some hands. So if anybody has any comments, please show a hand. So Director Stauffer, you are up, sir.
Yes, I was gonna offer the applauso. So thank you. Just fabulous presentation and telling the story and, and the work of our HR department, which is very vital to the whole conversation. So thank you and staff.
It's our pleasure, yes.
Olivia, you have your hand up.
You don't have any like questions, I just have a couple of comments that I wrote down. I love like this, the collaboration and cooperation that you put together. Wasn't aware of, like seeing you already, I know that obviously it's in most departments, but I wasn't aware of that in your guys' department. So I appreciate that. And I liked how thorough you were with the staffing and the decisions that you were making. I just appreciate that whole project, like that was, that was a lot. Like I do a lot of digital things and I know how hard it is putting it together. So thank you for all your work.
Well, you're welcome. And of course, it's a, it's a whole team effort when we have to come up with staffing decisions. It's, it's tough work and we have to really be thoughtful about every step along the way. So thank you.
Of course, we appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, just a quick question.
Go ahead, Director Koo.
Yeah, would this be the appropriate time to discuss the summaries of the CBAs that we're looking to approve or would that be better suited for those action items?
Yeah, I think that was, those would be better suited at that point when, under the board business.
Great. Then I think appropriate to the presentation, just great job. And also appreciate the, the format of the documents provided. They have a consistent feel and form to them and that's noticed as somebody who enjoys those things.
Thank you.
All right, Director Jeffries.
Yeah, we're just going to applaud the effort and that you guys put on. And I, I can foresee, predict the need for more social media, more video productions like that to, to the board, to the staff and to the community and to the students. And I really appreciate that, that effort and hope the district can gain some, every time they do one of those, they'll be excited to do another one. I really, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Yeah, great, thanks. Great point, Director Jeffries, too. Yes, good, good format to provide and particularly to our community to get a good idea of kind of what goes on with, within the district. Okay, anything else? Well, Victoria, thank you so much and I'm sure you'll be around for later questioning maybe, once we get to our board business.
Yes, thank you, I will.
I muted myself. Okay, next up, we have the superintendent's report. The floor is yours there.
Hold on. Can you hear me?
We got you.
Director Gibson, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
And great job, Victoria. And there is no truth to the rumor that I was a technical advisor on that presentation. She did it all, great job. I do not have a very large report. I spent the la, most of the last two weeks talking to parents, talking to staff, talking to administrators about how things were going, where we were hitting the mark and where we weren't. I also spent time talking with parents, staff and, and, you know, about coming back and how we can, how we can make that work. And slowly, surely, can we speed it up? Do we need to slow it down? I also spent a lot of time speaking with other colleagues who are in various stages of opening their schools or not opening their schools and looking around. You know, I, I look forward to the conversation when we talk about the reopening and, and how it's going. Couple other things, I'm waiting for WIAA to make a statement on when we can participate in athletics. And I know our, our high school students, middle school students are chomping at the bit. There are some, you know, there's youth soccer and some youth sports are going on, but at this point in time, WIAA sports are not. And we're looking for a time when we can start to move that along. Spent, spent time with, working on the levy and capital, EPNO levy, capital projects levy, and we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes. Updated the figures and have invited John Gores and Corey Plager, who will be at the November 16th board meeting to make a financial presentation. And they work with DA Davidson. I've worked with John Gores since he and I were both young men. So I, it does a great job. And Corey Plager's former ESD, a financial man, and they will have a presentation for us. Talking a little bit about enrollment, our enrollment is not as good as we would like it. And part of that stems from, you know, us being remote, remote and part of it stems from some parental choice and, and some things that are going on. I understand a lot of the parameters. We're, we're still okay. We're gonna look and see what our November enrollment is and for, we have not laid off or furloughed any employees. You saw in Victoria's presentation that we're, we're down forty employees from the end of last year and which, which I compliment the board and the staff, Darlene, Victoria, the board for accepting, you know, the plan that was presented to them, creating the plan, presenting it, all of that. So we're doing okay, but that doesn't, we're gonna have to take a second look that first week in November, first board meeting in November. Cabinet and administrators are gonna be talking about that throughout the month. You'll see the contracts for approval. And I'm hoping to start speaking to community groups here in the next couple of weeks. I've, I've talked to city council and I'm gonna try and get on the commissioners' agenda and other entities. I believe that one other item of discussion and maybe Director Stauffer will include this in his PowerPoint is that we've been invited to, one or more of us to the city council meeting to discuss cooperating and collaborating on a legislative agenda. And I hope Director Stauffer will speak to that in, in his presentation. As for that, the rest of my presentation or the rest of my thoughts will be some in, in the discussion that will come forward. So thank you. No, we'll get it, we will get, we'll get that when it comes up.
All right, great.
Oh, yeah. Wait a second, next. Tracy's gonna, I'm confused just there for a second. Tracy's gonna bring up.
The levy stuff.
I, I have updated the figures that I gave you the other day and I've taken out the recommendations of what should be a tier one, tier two, tier three. And that's going to be something that we work on as a priority throughout the next couple of weeks. I do know that I've spoke to the people in charge in regards to a fire alarm system and the fire sprinkler system in Haller. Some of those, those, both of those issues, issues can be scaled back somewhat if, if in fact, we choose to do that. That was a question that the board asked the other day. I also know that I'm gonna try and meet with the county sometime this month to talk about the Gray Wolf sewer connection. There are some things that we might be able to get done before the end of this year. And could you move that down a little bit, Tracy? Keep going, just go all the way. And those are all the things that we've done and, and then here's the second page. This has the total amounts for the buildings. One of the things that, you know, you will see a lot of, there's a lot of money being pumped into the high school, but as we scroll down more, we're looking at this, the, the bot, no, up a little bit farther, Tracy, this middle, this is all the tech now, we're, we're looking at, you know, a total of somewhere in the neighborhood of a four, $4.8 million technological upgrade to our network system and phone system, intrusion alarms and all of those things. This, these are, this is for, it says district, but for, those are in the whole buildings and they're in, you know, these figures are intertwined in both of these documents. So I, I really think one of the issues that I, I see the capital projects levy really addressing is that, is the technological gap that our school district currently is in and we, we will have to upgrade that. And this, this starts that proposal. Bo has been involved with ednetics in a lot of these discussions. So we're going to continue to move forward and, you know, explain a lot of these systems. I will tell you right now, the current phone system we have in our district is obsolete in our cake and we're, we're trying to patch it together with baling wire and bubble gum because there aren't parts out there. It's so old. So this is one of those things that we really, we really can't waste a lot of time on because we get situations every, almost weekly where voicemail and the inability to transfer phone calls is, is not there. So this technological upgrade is very crucial to, you know, the viability of a lot of the education that takes place technologically. So that's, that's an update on that. Next, at the next board meeting, I'm gonna talk, Darlene and I are gonna talk at length about the EPNO levy. I, I plan on getting information out to the community. I, I plan on getting information out to the community sometime towards the end of this month, first of next month, as I have said all along. I, this, this is a February election. I do not want to confuse people that this will be on the November ballot. So you're going to see some articles in the newspaper, articles on our website. And we're moving forward to get this across.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any questions from the board?
The one, one last thing real quick.
Good.
But I, I, I will, because we're going to get out of this board meeting and I'll forget because Tracy and I are down in the boardroom and we're putting all this stuff together. We couldn't do it. I couldn't have done it without Tracy and Tracy couldn't have done it without Bo. And so I want to give both of them kudos to us being down here. And we're putting it up in the screen. I look forward to having our first board meeting. We've upgraded this room. We have some projectors in here. We have some different furniture and some different plaques and things in the wall. So I look forward to our next board meeting. So thank you, Director Gibson, and I can answer some questions.
All right. Any questions to the board? Director Jeffries, you have your hand up, but it's been up, so I don't know if you left it up from prior.
Up, it's up by accident. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Director Stauffer.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Clark, thank you for the update. And I see you added the elevator question. Is just having that out there. And I know it's a long shot, but having it on that list of items for the future. And it, for my other board members, it was on a previous bond proposal to have an elevator there at the district to get people up to the second floor for that ADA accessibility and so forth. And just wanted it as a placeholder on there so that we can keep our eye on that. But I agree, fully agree with all this technology because that, that's been a challenge for many years. And we have an opportunity now to move us forward. So thank you again, Dr. Clark, and thank you, Tracy and Bo.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Okay. If no further questions, we can move on to our next area, which is board business. And the first part is something I think we've all been waiting again for is the discussion on the reopening. So Dr. Clark, turn it back over to you.
This is the health and, health and safety plan that we have worked on for the last three weeks to get everything in order as we bring students back. Want to make a point that we've had probably about 15 to 18 I need special ed kids in, in school for this past week and starting next week. Each building's going to have on or around 50 kids next week. And these are the guidelines that the principals, Sonya Bittner, staff and all of us have, have worked on. I'm not going to read them all to you. You can, you, you got them in your packet. You've looked them through. It, it's one of those things, these are going to, I believe that this was sent out to all of our parents late afternoon, early evening on Friday. So everyone's had a chance to look at that. These, these are things that we'll, we will be really looking over. And we want to be on top of this. Principals are going to meet and we're going to meet again on Wednesday to make sure we have all our ducks in a row for this coming Monday. I think one of the things that I want to share a little bit of some conversations that I've had with people over this last week, 10 days. And I would say for the first three, four weeks of school, there was general agreement that we did the, we did the right thing in regards to starting remotely and waiting till the numbers got down. Everyone, really, one of the big, strong issues that was important to a lot, the administrators and the teachers was that we got our virtual online teaching down. That we, we, we recognize we didn't do as good a job as we could have last spring. It was important to everyone that we did a good job coming out of the chute. You, Director Jeffries spoke earlier today at this meeting about some of the videos he's watched. And I think we are beginning to get a handle on it. And I think we are doing a, a, a better job virtually than we did last spring. But when I talk with, with parents this last week, you can, you can chalk it up to a lot of things. But, you know, I, I, I keep coming back to the term pandemic fatigue. And I realize we've said all along that our number one consideration is staff, student and community health. But, but the question, you know, also brings up mental health and some other things. And we, we have to meet all those criteria. But, but I'm starting to hear from our parents. You saw a note that Director Gibson read before the meeting. Director Koo alluded to a couple other letters, notes that we've received. The, our parents, our community is, is wanting to know if we could ramp up the plan and maybe get a little bit quicker with bringing students on board. And this, this is, uh, this is not something I take lightly, nor do I recognize that any of you do. That said, I would like to get the board's perspective upfront. My perspective is that I still think we need to be slow, but I think we can ramp up some of these things a little bit faster. I, I really would like to create a plan that all of our elementary students were in, that wanted to be on an AABB schedule, could be in, in classes before we leave for Christmas. And if, and, and maybe even sooner than that. I, I will say that while we're all apprehensive, I, I, I'm beginning to look at the nu- the coronavirus numbers. I'm beginning to look at a lot of things. And I'm more optimistic about bringing our kids back. I talked to staff. Staff are also interested in doing it slowly but surely. Understand, one of the issues with middle school and high school students is the ability to cohort students, something that's easy to do at the K5 level because those students only have one teacher. And when you listen and follow the plans and listen to Dr. Unthank talk, she talks about cohorting of students where you have honor between 12 and 14 students in a classroom and the teachers come to them. Those children stay together. They go to recess together. They eat lunch together. They do all of those things together on an AABB deal. That's what, that's what prevents the disease from spreading. What it also does is this, if someone in one of those cohorts gets COVID, it's easier to contact trace and it's easier to narrow down the individuals who were in contact with the person that, that had COVID. So versus at the middle school and the high school where teachers, excuse me, students have multiple teachers and they move around, it's much more difficult to cohort those students. And so I've been having conversations with Mark Harris and Sean Langston. And they're looking at seeing what they can do with the scheduling of students and, and seeing what they can do to cohort some of their models. And, you know, especially in some of the hands-on CTE classes, especially in some of our special needs classes, and especially in many of our AP classes. AP students and staff, AP staff are struggling because of the lack of contact time. So my question to the board, you, you, we, we've been in this for five weeks. We're starting with 50 kids in each building next week. How comfortable do you feel in, in maybe speeding things up if we get through next week pretty well?
So I'll, I'll lead off here. And I, for me, for me, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, you know, and I, and I've stated in the past too that, you know, definitely taking safety into consideration. You know, and another main priority is the, the mental health and, and capabilities of our students. And, you know, that's, that's, that's very important to me and to, I think, a lot of parents and to some of the students as well, and, and to the staff as well. I, it, we all take that into consideration. On that note, I guess the one thing that I, that I would just ask, you know, as we're talking about the, the middle school and high school part, is we, we do know that there are some, some, some districts that, that are working with that model. And so, and I'm, I'm sure that we're, we're, and I would hope that we are communicating with them on, on ways that they're working within that model to potentially utilize some ideas that have already been tried at this point as we, as we move forward. And, and I get, yeah, I, it, I, in my own mind, I'm trying to just see how you can get the number of kids that we have in our high school and split them up and divide them based on cohorts and all the classes. And everybody has six different classes during the day and, and they don't, you know, and just listening to my daughter, you know, and say her friends, she, she has six classes and not one of them with any of her regular friends. So just figuring that piece out, I, I know it's difficult. But, but bottom line of that is, you know, within the safety bounds of, and, and criteria and working with Dr. Unthank and with our, our administrators, I support, you know, working within that. So I know we have some hands up. I think Director Koo, you were first up. So turn the floor over to you, sir.
Great, thank you. Obviously, this is, this is the topic du jour. And I appreciate the, the, the comments that we heard earlier. And like I said, we heard from a couple other parents earlier today who contacted the board directly. I, I would share in that optimism that Dr. Clark and President Gibson spoke to just because of where we've been able to, you know, be as a county overall and those overall trends. That said, I, it would be disingenuous of me to not say that I have that concern in the back of my mind. So I think it goes without saying, but I will say it. You know, as long as we reserve the option for some families to choose to continue to interact as much, if not completely online, as possible. I, I think that's very important for us to acknowledge and respect right now. You know, I have, as we all do, have various friends and contacts who are parents and families in the district, all of them very thoughtful, all of them very well educated for what that's worth, and still a variety of opinions. I know some who are looking for us to lean in to this challenge in the, in the, in regard to, you know, being more optimistic in our approach. And I have others who are waiting for a COVID, not a cure, but treatment essentially, you know, that, that can prevent the illness before they're willing to open things up. So there's, there's a broad swath. But as a parent and a board member, you know, I can share and recognize that some of our students, perhaps all of them to some degree, but some of our students are really struggling with how we've had to approach things. And I think to answer directly Dr. Clark's question, I am feeling more on the optimistic side, that cautious optimism. And I know that's in some sense a milk tubs dancer, but I do lean more on the side of leaning in, you know, assess. Obviously, our teachers are forefront of this concern. When we have better times, you know, this is a remarkable example or model and statistics that we can all study and, you know, dissect. But right now, just as we're doing the triage in real time, those are just my initial thoughts. And if you want to drill me down for more specific examples, by all means, please do.
Thank you, Director Koo. I guess real quick, before I go on to the next hands, question, Dr. Clark, I know that there's a, that we have a survey that's out for parents. And, you know, the questions regarding that are on that are around, you know, do you want your kids coming back, not, don't want them coming back? Do we, do we have an idea of how we're doing? We don't need, I don't, not specifically the numbers, but are we getting responses on that survey?
I can't answer that question that way, or I, I don't know the answer.
Okay. Okay. Cause I know as a parent, I went through that. And so that would be helpful with some information, just as Director Koo was saying, you know, offering that opportunity for those that still choose to stay home to do that. Okay, next up, we have, we'll go with Director Pickens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I have some, obviously I have concerns, although I do, I do, um, I, I do agree with both what was said by my two colleagues about, about the mental health piece, absolutely. I have concerns and probably before, prior to today, I might've had even a slightly different take on this. But then again, I'm, you know, as, as quick as things stay the same, they change. And, you know, I, I'm getting, you know, there's just an updated report that the CDC has, has just released that, again, although I think this is the second time that it's come out, that coronavirus can be spread through airborne particles that can linger in the air for, for minutes or even hours, even among people who are more than six feet apart. And so with this new information that just came out today, and it, it talks specifically about ventilation and being, being a main concern. So based on some of this new data, I would, I would certainly, before even we send folks back on Monday, I would, I would definitely appreciate, Dr. Clark, if you could give some feedback based on what, what CDC guidance is saying, you know, from the recent report and how that, how our ventilation systems compare with some of the concerns that they're bringing up. The, the other piece that comes to mind is when we say a week, to me, I feel like if there is a, if there is a problem, a week seems like it may not be enough time to, to know that there is a problem, which would be my, my, my main concern. It seems too short of a period. I think if there was a, a major problem, I think we would, might find it within that second week. It would really come, come to light. And I could be wrong, but based on the way that, that I kind of track the timelines on these things, I'm, I, I think a week would be enough time. I'm I I think a week would be enough time to figure out procedures and some things and to make things run smooth smoothly. But I'm more worried about putting our putting our staffers or students at risk. So which is obviously one of the reasons why I think that go go slow perspective is 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 possibly more desirable from my perspective. I'm not necessarily opposed to taking a look at the timeline, but the one week really really doesn't feel like it's long enough to identify those problems. With anything we do, regardless of the grade level, I would it's it's important that we're still following OSPI guidelines, I think, just to make sure that things are safe and also to make sure that there's not, you know, there's there's certainly liability concerns as well. So I know the OSP guidelines probably aren't 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 aligned with the new recent CDC data that came out today. But I believe that there is some specific language that talks about which age groups it can be, which age groups are safer than others. And although some other districts have have ventured into this territory, I'm I'm certainly curious about how they were able to do that based on the the current OSPI guidelines. Other than that, I also agree with Director Ku about their maintaining an online option for all grade levels, regardless if that's if that's the preference. And we absolutely need to offer that. But but I I I am I am concerned about having a one-week buffer would would sum up my 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 point of view.
Thank you, Director Pickens. Go Director Stoffer.
Yes, hi. Thank you for the input from colleagues and from the superintendent. Thinking through all this, I've been pleased with how we set up the virtual. Is that that had to come first? And we got it up and running. Yes, there was some hiccups. But that whole process had to come first along with, do we have all of our needed PPE? Do we have all of our safety protocols and and the training out to the staff? And I I believe we do, but I I do need to hear that. And then I I also need to hear that that everybody will follow those safety procedures. We're in the world now of continuing that assessing the risk and which and Director Pickens alluded to it there that, you know, we start the day with one pitcher and then by noon it changes. So we have to remain flexible and fluid with this. I'm pretty I actually, I'm confident that we've taken the steps that we could, we can look at picking up the tempo. But I'm I'm concerned with going too fast. And I and I like the slow, steady approach. We're going to have to see what this first week happens on the 12th. And it's it's probably realistically going to be a two-week assessment before we can really see how it all comes together. But I think we have the procedures and and steps in place to increase the tempo if the data indicates that. I'm I am also concerned with the ventilation systems because we know we know our buildings are not not. Well, that's why we need a capital projects levy, a few other things. And so do we have that that covered in that part of the discussion? And that is a great concern. And then also is to watch where people start getting complacent. And we always have to be on the aware. That's why safety officers, safety persons, those health technicians, building principals, all the leadership have always got to be on the lookout and not become complacent and comfortable. Maybe that's a better word, comfortable. Because the the safety of our students, staff and our community is is paramount in this. And and Clon County is doing a really good job right now. And then what are our neighbors doing too? And I know that Port Angeles started kindergarten today. But to get to the the basic question, and yes, I'm in favor of of increasing, but let's make sure we assess it. Let's make sure we have all those protocols in place. And and we still have to have the opportunity for our families and our staff that aren't comfortable coming back into the building that they can continue as they have been. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Stoffer. Director Jeffries.
The advantage of going slow last is that I can say I pretty much agree with or agree with just about everything everybody said. I'm more inclined to be the very go slow approach. I think we need to make sure we work very closely with county health. I think SCWAM and the SCWAM community has done a very good job at keeping our numbers very low. Retrofitting our schools to be ready and training the staff and really the students to conform to health protocols to keep us all healthy is a challenge and in place. I think the middle school and the high school, it's going to take a while. It sounds to me like they're not quite ready because they, you know, doing the scheduling and getting the cohort groups together and trying to figure that out. Elementary schools might be able to progress a little bit faster if everything's in place. And again, from my reading of what's going on with the COVID virus that was really in charge of all this, as we learn more about it, things like you said, change on a almost daily basis, sometimes sooner. So I'd I'd say the we need to continue on with the virtual learning. I think there'll be aspects to virtual learning all year long. And some families will may want to opt for virtual learning all year because they've got grandparents at home or adults at home or children that have underlying conditions and they're just want to be make sure they keep their kids safe. I have real concerns with the social, emotional, mental and learning outcomes from the way we're having to do school these days. That's so much different. But it's more than just schools. It's playgrounds, it's after-school weekends. It it's a real change in life. And I can't emphasize probably enough the stress that we're all under. And stress from school and how we're doing school, stress from the elections, stress from the national news, stress, stress, stress everywhere. And what effect that's going to have on all of us. And I'm not sure we can solve that. But I think we have to be very careful not to move too quickly to reopen more classrooms and be ready to move real quickly into closing things down if we have another outbreak outbreak. You know, luckily, applause to the SCWAM community and to the county. We didn't have the uptick in cases after the Labor Day weekend. We thought we might. So good for SCWAM and good for the Olympic Peninsula doing their job to keep us all safe. So my direct answer is go very slowly with and with consultations with department health and and making sure we have everything in place before we add on. Thank you.
Thank you. And just I want to I want to thank some of my fellow colleagues there for some of their comments and just kind of backing up a little bit in Director Pickens. And I see your hand up. I'll come back to you in a second. That I I will agree that that, you know, that first increase after a week might be a little too quick. But I think once we get through a couple of weeks, my thoughts are if we can get through a couple of weeks and start that progression, we can build that progression up a little quicker as we move on. But definitely a slightly slower start in the beginning with increases we as we get closer to that, as we as we get through a few weeks and towards the holiday season and all as well. Okay, Director Pickens, back to you.
Yeah, thank thank you, Mr. Chair. Just just two quick things to follow up just to to your point, Mr. Chair. I I I would agree. I would I would hope that before we made a decision to speed anything up, perhaps perhaps and I'm sure I don't know how the dates line up, but I'd love to have a a discussion about how it's going on the at the current pace prior to that as at a board meeting. And then this is certainly secondary to all of the the safety concerns because, you know, student safety and staff safety is obviously number one. But also secondary to that, I think what we're what we're finding is that the the work of online teaching is is incredibly difficult. In fact, folks educators are working harder than ever to to deliver this more than more than they even were before. So I am I do have concerns about exactly how the how the workload is 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 shared in a hybrid option because you'll have students that are still learning from home and then you have students in class in front of you. And that's basically two different jobs that that teachers are going to have to do simultaneously. So I think I'm very very concerned about that juggling of the workload, which which I'm not saying that that can't be solved. That piece we we could certainly take a look at. But that that certainly as a as an additional somewhat secondary to the safety piece, but still very much a concern. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Dr. Clark, any questions back to us or are you good?
I got unmute. No, I think I I think I got pretty clear directions that we we need to get our ducks in a row. We'll see how next week goes. Continue continue to talk to principals, continue to monitor and staff and parents and continue to monitor their situation. And and if it jumps in front of us, we may be able to speed things up, but we also may not. That's kind of what I heard. And I will follow that direction and keep the board informed. And in answer to another question, when I get survey results, I know some buildings did some things. I think you're going to see some others. I will get that information out to the the board and in a timely fashion. At this point in time, I've not received any results. So I will get that out to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks. Good discussion, everyone, and appreciate everybody's candor comments on on that. Okay, next up, we have our annual review of policy 1620. So this is our our board superintendent relations document. And so just just a reminder to go through this and we is something we all sign every year. So hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to read this prior. Director Jeffries, your hand up there.
Yeah, a couple curious curiosity questions, I guess. I noticed that document that we have or the one that's published. I was going to ask Director Perkins, did you sign that at some point when you came on board? After you were elected?
I I don't believe that I signed it after I was elected. I believe I was part of a conversation when I was a candidate. But when when that discussion was going on, but I think that happened prior to me being elected.
Right, because I I signed it because I was appointed at the October 7 meeting last year. That's why I signed it. And my another question is, we got an election coming up in 2021. Are we going to sign it then in October? And after the election, we need to be sure then, if there are new board members or maybe the entire board, do we need to change our annual signing date to the December 2nd or 1st meeting in December meeting so that we're sure to capture the newly elected board members or the new board because we'll be a new board? And anytime anyone's appointed, getting them to sign it, making sure they get that this signed. Because essentially, Director Perkins operated this year, I guess technically not under the obligations of this because he didn't sign it. I think he probably is because it's a board agreement. But I just had questions about our timing and signing and making sure that everybody gets a chance to sign it.
I I muted myself instead of unmuting.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely, I think it actually does make sense, yeah. So no, makes No, not at all. Makes good sense. I'll I'll get some comments from the other board members. Director Stoffer, your hand up was next.
Yes, thank you. I think when we did this last fall, part of it was settling in with with their superintendent because wanted to part of those goals of of the board of and his his goals of moving forward. I do agree that should probably keep a placeholder out there if there comes a time when someone is appointed, that it is then reviewed. And I think that's kind of under. If we look at another policy, it's responsibility of the superintendent for the indoctrination of new board members and and then ourselves also. But then I would like to see it in the timeline of of in December, that first meeting because that's, you know, after those other elections and then and then and then board reorganization, election type thing. And looking now from other boards across the state, that's typically when they do that. But it's also okay to be flexible, fluid on these things. But that's just my thought on there. And I'm pretty confident that Director Pickens, I remember him being at you being at the workshop board meeting when we discussed this while you were a candidate. And reading through this, I I know you're following it. And and okay, we'll put your initial on it. But that's that's what I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Ku.
Excuse me, thank you. Yeah, I I guess literally that would be a third checkmark in agreeing with you on your timing question. And there never really has seemed to be consistency on this topic since I came on board. One thing I I think it's appropriate to recognize, and I don't have an answer to it, so it's a half question of how we want to proceed moving forward. But in my tenure on the board, there's always been kind of a gray space between the procedure or this policy, excuse me, and the procedure of it. And what we're looking at today is kind of the the vanilla example that I think covers most of the bases. But, you know, we've we've also, when I originally came on the board, we were at a point in time where the communication norms preference were a lot more rigid, a lot more strict, if you will. And my understanding is that derived from prior to my time on the board of kind of a little bit of a Wild West scenario where board members, the superintendent, and I don't know if this was their words, but my my interpretation of it was feeling like, you know, they were they were serving too many masters, so to speak, versus interacting directly directly with the board chair. The challenge when we swing that pendulum is we had board members who didn't adhere to that and didn't, you know, respect those, those boundaries. And so it's, there, there's a, a healthy perhaps tension there, but I just want to acknowledge, you know, with each superintendent we have in the district, obviously there's different comfort levels of communication norms and things of the like. I think it is good to touch base back on these, but I guess the half question in there is, you know, covering that day-to-day interaction that has been more liberal at times and certainly been a lot more restrictive at times per the direct, for lack of a better term, request by the superintendent. So there's, there's just an interesting gray there that I don't really have a finger on, but it's, it's posed some challenges in the past.
Director Jeffries, do you have more to share?
I was just looking, you know, we do have a policy sixteen twenty that generally describes the role of the superintendent and the board. This is a procedure. Obviously, by signing off on it, it's an acknowledgement that we agree with it and we've read it. It, I don't, we normally don't approve procedures. Procedures are in the realm of the administration, but I think this is a good one. I just, my concern was just making sure that all the board members, that we see all the board members have signed off on it. Thank you.
Yep. And, and that's, that's what this is about today is just reviewing it to sign. Director Pickens, and, and this will be all for this conversation.
I guess just more of a, more of a question based on what's, what's come up, and I don't know if this may be the, the elephant in the room or, so what, I mean, what if there was, I, I, based on my review of the document, it all seems, says maybe one questionable item, but other than that, it seems like it's all, it's all, you know, I, I agree with everything on there, but if, if there is an objection to this, could, could somebody expand on, on what that means or what, how that would dictate anything? Is there any teeth to this document really? Or I guess I'm just asking why, why are we signing off on it? What does it actually mean? If somebody doesn't sign off on it, for example?
Well, I mean, I, I just, it's, it's just a, an agreement between us, the board and the superintendent on how we're going to interact and act. I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't have any more to really add to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so I think that sort of answers my question, so.
Director Gibson?
Yes, go ahead.
I would add in, in response to Director Pickens, this, and, you know, if, if there is, you know, from time to time, if there are, are some verbiage in there that the board would like to change, or for that matter, the superintendent would like to change, I think it's paramount among either A, a board member or B, the superintendent to say, hey, you know, maybe we need to take a look at this item and expand on it, or maybe we don't even need to have that item. I don't think this document i- in my mind is always going to be a fluid document on an annual basis. I don't think it needs to be the exact same verbiage every year. The level of comfortability with whoever the superintendent and/or the board could predicate some changes. So this is something that, this is similar to documents I've used for the last fifteen years, well, twenty years, but there's, there's, there was a breakup in there when I wasn't the superintendent. It's, but it is not the same document. It's a similar document. So I would, I would recognize that, that it's, this, this is not a document that's going to go on in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, anything else to share as we move on to our next topic? So I just, question, is this going to come out electronically for us to sign or?
You will get a docu-sign.
Okay.
The way this is hooked up, it's hard for Tracy to talk. It's easier for me, so you will get a docu-sign document.
Yep, okay, perfect. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, just a procedural question.
Okay.
Director Jeffries identified a great point about this as living in the, the protocol realm, which doesn't, or excuse me, procedures. Does this require a motion of any kind? Is this where if somebody was dissenting to the document, they would proclaim it? I, I don't want to over-formalize it, but just.
I don't, I don't know that we've ever had that in, in, you know, my time on the board where we've come to and voted on this.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, I, I don't know that you, you know, I think that goes back to the question that Dr. Clark was just posing is that if this was something that we wanted, that needed changing, then that would be something that would require a vote and a motion to do that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next up, Director Stoffer, you have the floor with the legislative priority update.
Thank you, President Gibson. Trey, okay, Tracy's got it there. So first, appreciation to Director Pickens and Director Jeffries for sitting there through the, through the meeting and, and also, students, I know you gave it a violent effort to try to join in. I think if I was to do it all over again, we would have had a training session of how to access it the day before, but I do, and I, what I heard from my colleagues earlier is that I appreciate your can-do spirit of, of trying to join and, and be involved and we're, we'll just keep moving forward on that and appreciate your student voice. So let's go to next slide, please, Tracy. So here's just some basic takeaways, as we all know, was that first combined general assembly and done totally virtual. So there was a lot of challenges, but it, it worked out and was pretty successful. Just on myself, I had twenty-six times where I lost connectivity during, during that eight hours and would have to reboot and refresh and, but we kept, another ones, there was a power outage at the actual where WASD's staff was gathered down in Olympia also. So outreach and participation greatly increased. We had a total of two hundred and two of our two hundred ninety-five school districts did register on the day of. We had a hundred and twenty-four were actively participating. And, and then fourteen of our fifteen, of our districts in Director Area Four were there and were actively commenting and participating. So that was the outreach that my, that my, my partner Rebecca Dill and then Bruce Richards, who runs the Red Resolution Desk, was tremendous and glad we were able to reach everybody there. Next slide, please. So this is then what I submitted this, I submitted this last Thursday. That window was open from Monday to today at noon. And on your left on this slide, you can, you'll see the positions that were voted on and it shows their voting results. And Tracy, I guess if you want to pull that up, but appreciate that. And so, you know, grab a cup of coffee some other time and you can scroll through that and in the green on all of them, it has what was the voting percentage or, or the turnout? And those were those seventy-seven items that we've gone through many, several times, So Tracy, if you can return, thank you. And the next two links, and I don't think we need to go into them now unless my colleagues want to, but the next link has all of WASD's standing legislative positions. And remember, those are the ones that started out as being new and then became legislative positions and then after four years of voting on, they became the standing legislative positions and will remain so unless legislation changes or the item is no longer applicable. And one of them was that W.A.T.K.I.D.S. one that has been, it's in place and so having a legislative position on that particular item was no longer applicable. And then the last link has, it has everything, it has all the LPs, which are the legislative positions and the standard legislative positions, hundred and forty-eight of those, which is in our, our booklet to use at any time to draw from during the legislative session. And oops, it didn't pop up, did it? There we go. So in this, in here, it's broken into those five categories that we've talked a lot about, learning, staff, funding allocation, and there's capital facilities is number three, which is probably over here on the left side of that document. And then category five is governance. So that's where you will find, find all, the ones that are highlighted were the ones that were voted on at the, at the assembly. And the other ones are just in that, in our suite of tools that we have available to us with advocating and, and conversations with other elected bodies and especially with our legislators. Okay, thank you, Tracy. So that list, oops, sorry. So that's, that's the list and, you know, part of the lens is we want to make sure that squim is at that table. And so taking all of those and what, you know, talking with our colleagues in Director Area Four, our colleagues across the whole two hundred ninety-five, what, what do we need to get on that table that the legislators were, will take notice? And so, and then also trying to cover all five of our, of those categories. You'll see that a lot still end up in, in one, which is in learning and, and that is student-focused, which I think we had all agreed that that is paramount. There's some things that dealing with our current COVID crisis that are mixed in in there. Things that are always a challenge is the McKinney-Vento and Truance-Ebecker funding, which are those basically mandated, mandated, but we don't receive appropriate funding. I hit some of the, the school construction revenue, comprehensive school safety, support for special ed programs, forest revenue approach, apportionment, full funding of basic education, government to government, which is our relationships with our tribes, and that's important up there. And I, I will share that out to our tribal community that they, that they see that also. So that's how that turned out. But again, we, we still have all those other ones to pull from. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So this here, that, the kind of show where everything kind of basically falls into place. So this is OSPI's budget priorities for the twenty-one, twenty-three biennium. And you can see then that several of our priorities are on there too. Closing gaps and access to learning devices, access to funding for K, said school construction and so forth. So it's good to have that up there. OSPI typically gets theirs out this time of the year because all the other entities out there, they're trying to meet a December deadline to get their reports to the legislators, but OSPI is usually a little sooner on it. On the other side there, I listed some of the other elected entities or that we work with across, and Dr. Clark mentioned City Council. So I forwarded you earlier there what they're looking at. They are having a meeting on the ninth of November. It's a workshop at five PM and the district, the twenty-fourth legislators will all be there. And this is an annual event that the City Council has done, I think, last year, year before, there were some of us in attendance. So they have invited us to be there. Doing a quick scan of what's on, the district's, our council's priorities is they, they've got broadband. And then another one is the off-site reservoir. And if you can recall, that's a piece of land that's upriver road that used to be common school trust lands. And then was a transfer to this program because it was no longer harvestable and was, and it could be better suitable for another resource. And that project involves the county, the tribe and the city. What depends on that is some additional funding so they could outright purchase it. And it's, it was valued around $2 million. Once that's done, all that funding is secured, that revenue would go to the common school trust land, which then account, which then school districts can access when they're in a building project and they pass a bond. Next up, the Board of County Commissioners, right now, they currently are listing broadband, but I know they have, they're looking at other items, childcare. A lot of these are asked to the Capital Budget Committee, which Representative Theringer is the chair of that. EDC, they've got broadband, I know there'll probably be more. NOAA, which is the North Olympic Legislative Alliance, which involves a whole bunch of stakeholders. The last conversation I heard was that they're also looking at broadband. Department of Natural Resources, just doing a quick scan of what their legislative ask will be, and there's a meeting tomorrow, their board, but there's things like broadband, the civil culture, which is forest management, forest health, and then seismic studies, which is one of those that's directly related to public, built, public schools. DNR is tasked with doing the seismic studies on all school buildings. And then I've got PUD and FIRE District Three, and I haven't seen anything with them, but I keep following and when it's updated. Or then I'll, I'll see how they align or partner with us. Next slide, please. So up next, this shows some possible legislation, which is currently in the works right now. State Board of Education is looking at those three bullet points and they're working on a draft bill. And information went out on my last Director Area Four update, that I'll probably do it again tomorrow with what those things are. Representative Ortiz-South also is proposing legislation on teacher secondary stress. I don't have the document right in front of me, but I will put that in that Director Area Four update for tomorrow. The Professional Educator Standards Board is looking at legislation for required training and those are the three bullet points right there. Bullet points right there and I'll make sure that's on that email tomorrow too. Um, a lot of it ties into that legislative position of uh attract, recruit, retain high-quality diverse staff. Um, and lastly, it just got dropped today and. It's the, I believe it's the transport Senate Transportation Committee is looking at a draft bill. Um, and it's tied to that RCW and it's specifically. Student transportation allocation definitions. And uh I received that about mid-afternoon and I haven't had a chance to read through it. Um, but I will put that on that email tomorrow too, so that's that's work that's happening right now um at in Olympia. Um, next slide, please. So next step, um this weekend, uh the Legislative Committee. Will be looking at the voting results and then developing uh the overall agenda for the twenty twenty-one session. And then on the nineteenth of October is a Director Area Meetings and actually they started tonight with uh. Direct areas one, two and three meeting combined. Um, and unfortunately, these they're on on our board meeting nights also. Um, with the exception of Director Area Seven and Eight, which is combined. And that is on Monday, the twenty-sixth of October. So I encourage my colleagues to, you can register for it, it's free. Um, and you heard me announce earlier that Alyssa is on the student uh. Video of student voice that was produced. Um, I will have to kind of split being here for our meeting and then also. Being at that regional meeting and it's you see, it's a combination of four, five and six direct areas. But I'll I'll figure it out. Um, then I listed the the meeting with the squim um city council. And um. We, I think we owe uh or reply to the um Assistant City Manager of. And then after that, got the annual conference and then uh year-round advocacy, I have it on the next slide. You know, one thing that I've found when I'm talking with these other elected bodies is. School districts are legislative advocacy is a year round. And uh most, well, what I have observed is that uh it's this time every year that the. Other elected bodies start working on on their conversations and uh they they always want to have a package to the legislators by. The December timeframe. And so I, when uh Assistant City Manager called me, I I walked her through the process that school districts use. Um, just um to help with the understanding that the ours is a year round. So um, that's basically it, the next slides tell us where we're at in the process and unless uh my colleagues have questions, that's uh. Um, and thank you uh for this opportunity.
Okay, so I would ask uh my colleagues, unless you have a dire need question, um we need to move on because we've got a executive session coming up and we still have a lot of business left to do. Um, okay. Next up, we have uh the um approval of our parent educator CBA. So this would uh. Requires a motion?
Mister Chair, just to get the conversation going, I would move to approve the CBA as presented.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Director Stauffer, I second it.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, open for discussion, any discussion, Director Ku?
Yeah, and I'll defer to the Chair and Superintendent on this, but just with the concern raised earlier. Um, I absolutely recognize the role of the board here is to not micromanage the CBAs and get into the details of it. Uh, but would welcome a comment if one is uh prepared and if not, uh understood. A comment in response, excuse me.
Uh, I'll I'll turn over to uh hear what Director Pickens has uh to offer here.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to speak to some of the the specific language in the uh in the agreement specifically about um. Involvement in in committees and such, um I I was I was happy to see that in the summary. That um, you know, I think taking that collaborative approach is certainly important, I believe there was a couple different uh. Couple different committees noted in there and I'm glad to see that that it's decision-making process is uh is inclusive of our of our paraeducators.
All right, thank you. Any other uh, any other comments? So uh I I guess uh only in in response to Director Ku, and I don't know if you have anything, Dr. Clark?
I I do.
Good.
And this is the same verbiage that I sent to uh. The individual who drafted the letter. There there are two potential problems. By considering your request, it could legally be construed that the board is negotiating with individual members or subset of the bargaining unit. You asking the board considering to consider this, that's negotiations. As I indicated below, this is a violation of the collective bargaining agreement, which states we can only bargain with. The unit, not individual members, and is legally indefensible for the school board. The second point is, once an agreement has gotten as far along in the process as it has, it can be an unfair labor practice. Which is a technical legal term, collective bargaining for the board to reject the tentative agreement. While there are rare occasions where that might be acceptable to do this at the request of some employees in the bargaining unit. Is very likely to create a liability for the district. Your disagreement is with the association, not the school board.
Thank, thank you for that clarification there, Dr. Clark. Uh, anything further on that, Director Ku?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, so with that said, uh, any other uh hearing, no other discussion? Moving on uh to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Any abstentions?
Yes, I abstain.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. Next up, we have uh the approval of the uh S E A CBA.
Mister Chair, move to approve as presented.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second Jeffries.
Okay, any uh discussion on this one?
Uh, yeah, just uh this applies to both, but again, gratitude to the bargaining teams on both sides, if you will, and um. Appreciate the form and format that this was presented to us. Um, I think it helps uh set a strong precedence for excellence as we do this moving forward. Um, I think this board uh has continued to mature over the years. Um, I and I don't want to speak ill of uh previous boards, uh we've had some long-tenured boards that I think uh may have. May have established some protocols that were uh desirable. Um, but this moves us one step closer to uh what I believe is the standard of excellence in the school board's role. In being on the front end and certainly on the improving back end of these collective bargaining agreements, so. Uh, my sincere gratitude to all involved uh with these discussions and obviously everything punctuated by this tenuous time.
Wonderful, thanks, thanks, uh, good, good points there, Director Ku, Director Pickens?
Briefly, just uh just again to say, I appreciate the the collaboration and um and and the note in there about a a comprehensive. Salary schedule resonated just just because I know sometimes those things can be so um so confusing. So I think having having something that is comprehensive all-in-one is is um is uh is is the way to proceed and I think it also helps with uh. Attracting and recruiting the best educators for the students at Squim, so, thanks.
All right, thanks again, uh, yeah, and and I'd like to uh. Also state, you know, thank you to uh those that were all involved uh and both uh both parties in uh making this happen and just appreciate the uh. Calm conversation and uh and moving forward with this, it's uh it's good to see uh that open communication, okay? Uh, with that said, moving forward, uh for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of uh the S E A CBA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Any abstain?
Uh, yes, sir, abstain.
Okay, great, um. Okay, that's it for uh for our regular meeting, uh just for the goodie order and I know Director Stauffer and and also uh. Um, uh, Dr. Clark had brought up the collaborate collaborative uh meeting with the um. Uh, the legislators uh coming up next month and November ninth, so. Um, I would ask if you uh if you plan to attend that. Um, let's uh connect to uh Tracy and let her know, so if we do have a quorum, we'll um that'll be noted. Um, I'm gonna do my best to uh to attend that, I I haven't done that in the past, but I'd like to uh this time around, so um. I just pass that on, anything, anybody else with anything for the good of the order?
Just want to uh thank Director Stauffer for all his work uh with the legislative priority stuff, I know that's uh that's a that's a ton of work to do and I I appreciate both that at our board level and at the regional level, thank you, Director Stauffer.
Concur.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, uh, with that said, um, the uh the board is going to move into uh executive session for fifty minutes to uh. Talk about the Dr. Clark's uh work and performance. So uh we will be leaving this meeting and uh Tracy will set up a new meeting and send us an invite. Um, good night, everybody, thanks for those that stuck it out this evening and uh everyone have a good evening.
Thank you.